Good evening, everyone. Tonight is September 11, 2024. It is 6:00 PM almost exactly. I'd like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to make the motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
So this is Janet. I would move to approve the agenda for the September 11, 2024 city council meeting with one minor change, that is moving item D2, city attorney report, to follow item C1, public forum.
Would you want to move D1 also?
Oh, I suppose I could do that. Want to get out of here early tonight? So I would amend, is that okay with you, Kevin? We would move yours up.
Oh, you bet. I was distracted.
That's all right. So then I would amend the motion to approving the agenda for tonight with the change of moving items D1 and D2 to follow item C1, public forum.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions on that concise?
Might I suggest that we follow the easement vacation in case there's any questions on the easement vacation? We can scoot after that.
Okay, this is, third try is a charm. So I'll amend my amendment to say moving items D1 and D2 to follow item C2 on the agenda.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
We'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. So we have that consent agenda. I'll make the motion to approve the September 11, 2024 bill payments as presented. Is there a second?
Yep, this is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any questions regarding the bill payments or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak at the public open forum for tonight's meeting? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll move on to number two, the easement vacation. And? Jack, do you want to lead that, or Bill, do you want to lead that? Or Eleanor, do you want to lead that?
This is Eleanor's topic right here. We'll let her lead it off.
All right, Eleanor, you're on.
Hi, so this is a public open forum, or a public hearing for the easement vacation that is associated with a lot line adjustment in the Priner's Preserve development. There is going to be a small lot line adjustment to adjust the lot line between two different parcels to allow for a larger driveway on one of the parcels. Currently, the line goes right through that driveway, and they want to adjust that so that they can continue to have that larger driveway. But parcels are owned by the same people, and the easement vacation is simply to remove the mandatory utility and drainage easement that is on lot lines in between lots in subdivisions. And when they move that lot line over a little bit, we'll put a new drainage and utility easement over that new lot line.
So basically, there's no change?
No.
Or either property, except for the paperwork to make it legal. But before we go, Bill, do we have to read the public hearing notice or not?
No, you don't. We can waive that, and you can go right to the public hearing.
Okay. So we have a public hearing. Thank you for that information. Does anybody have questions about it? I happen to understand it because I talked to Eleanor earlier about it. So somebody's driveway is on the lot line. They want to move the lot line so that it's, everybody on paper gets what they have above ground. How's that?
Yep, very good. I guess the only question I have is how did somebody's driveway get on the lot line?
Eleanor?
I, what's, I'm not entirely aware of how that happened. Both properties were owned by the same people, and surveying errors happen. They, when they built the driveway, they had thought that they were on the right side of the lot line. Sometimes that doesn't happen, and this is an easy way to fix it, to get everybody what they want, and at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
You would think, sorry to pontificate, with all the modern technology, they would be able to do that accurately. If you remember on Lake Drive, on the Howard Lake Preserve, the first reiteration, the lot line went through the middle of every house because the guy on the horse and buggy with whatever they used back then missed. I mean, he was wrong on every lot, but this is all computerized and whatever. Anyway, never mind.
I got a question. Do they have setbacks on driveways at all with the property?
We do not.
They don't? You can have your driveway right on the line.
You can have your driveway right on the line.
Learning.
Interesting.
I would have figured it was town at least.
Yep.
Does that mean you can snow blow all your snow over onto your neighbor's yard then? Just kidding.
If you don't get caught.
I mean, it might start a fight, but, yeah.
All right. So any other questions or discussion, anyone? And hearing none, I'll move to approve.
You didn't open it to the public.
Oh, anybody in the public would care to come up and speak? Hearing none, I will close it with the right to reopen if necessary, and I'll move to approve Resolution 2411, a resolution to vacate a drainage utility easement, lots 12 and 13, block 2 in Priner's Preserve. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Thank you, Eleanor.
Thanks, Eleanor.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Okay, so now we're going to move the city attorney up.
Well, you moved both the, both consultants up, so.
You can do city engineer first if you're going to do them in order.
Okay. Chip seal.
So we have a estimate for, excuse me, pay estimate number two for our chip seal project. This payment is, we're not closing out this contract quite yet. We're going to hold the contract open until the spring. We do have an option to request the contractor to come back and sweep again if after winter snowplow operations and all of that kicks some of our chip seal loose. Jim can make the decision whether he wants to have some areas swept again if needed. We're not necessarily anticipating that or much of that, but we will leave that contract open until, until 20, early 2025. So this is pay estimate two. We're holding some retainage, 1% retainage on the project. This amount due for this application is $25,516.24.
Any questions, anyone?
Is this for the whole, is this for the whole city or is it a specific area?
Well, this is for the chip sealing project that we did this summer.
This summer?
Yep. So it wasn't the whole city, it was about half of the, half of the town that we chip sealed, so.
Okay, thank you.
I can make the motion if you want, Mayor. Want me to make the motion? All right, so Rob, I move to approve pay estimate two to Ally Blacktop for the 2024 City of Columbus pavement maintenance chip sealing project.
This is Ron, I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. All right, finally, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor and counsel.
Did he have anything else?
Oh, anything else, Kevin?
I have nothing further at this time.
All right, finally, all right.
Ron, a roll. Mayor and counsel, I'm pleased to say that we have a purchase and sale agreement that's been negotiated with Steve Saunders and, let's see, I believe it's Patricia Saunders. So it's Steve, Stephen R. Saunders and Patricia M. Saunders. The reason it's coming to you tonight is we finally got it worked out yesterday, and so we didn't want to lose another couple of weeks on the due diligence period. So I know that Jack Davis sent it out to all of you. I'm going to, because you haven't had much time to review it, I'm just going to walk you through it quickly. So on page one, you have the parties. As I noted, Steve, Stephen R. Saunders and Patricia M. Saunders, so they're buying it as joint tenants. They could flip it to, before closing, they could flip it to an LLC, which is often the case, but they're buying it personally, at least at this point. On page one, the purchase price is, as you approved, $320,000. I believe that is the appraised value, so it's a full price offer for the land. What you won't find in here is any use clauses, so pursuant to the council's direction, that use clause was dropped. I believe Mr. Davis also indicated that the council is free at any time to make tax amendments and use changes through its zoning process. They understand that as a developer, and that, that was not raised as an issue. The downpamer, the earnest money is $10,000. That's held till closing. If they go through the feasibility period, which is 120 days, and they don't make any objections, then that earnest money, we say it goes hard, meaning it's non-refundable. If for some reason they do make an objection to title or other concerns about the property, they could terminate the agreement and get their earnest money back. I'm not going to walk you through all the pages of Boilerplate. Obviously, there are provisions regarding investigation of the site, very standard, examination of title, very standard. They can make objections to title, and then we are bound to correct those. I think probably the most significant thing is right on the first page. Item two on page one is the fact that, as you know, we will be working on a joint plat. Yes?
Which, which page we working off here?
We didn't have, we don't, you didn't give us copies. He emailed it to us today.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. No, no problem. I saw it wrong kind of looking.
Okay. My apologies. On page one, paragraph two, probably the most significant joint activity we have is working together on a plat. We agreed since we were already well into the plating process that that would be seller's responsibility to give them a marketable lot. And so the small parcel that is owned by Mr. Saunders will be joined with the larger parcels owned by the city, and there will be a plat that is processed concurrently with this due diligence period. There is language that if we don't mutually agree on the reconfiguration, either party can terminate. Originally, they had only the buyer with the ability to terminate, and we said if it's a mutual plat and it's by mutual agreement, then either party should be able to terminate the agreement. We don't expect that to happen. Mr. Saunders has been waiting an awfully long time to develop that small parcel by joining with the city property. Jumping all the way to page nine, I know some of you don't have that in front of you, but there's a very strong, all caps provision that says "as-is" condition. This is pretty typical language, but it really protects the city from claims that they didn't get what they bargained for. It's "as-is." There are reps and warranties about contamination, so those are accepted out of here. We don't, we don't have any knowledge of any contamination or hazardous substance on the property. It's up to Mr. Saunders to investigate whether that's the case. I don't expect that to come into play. One of the things that we went back and forth on a little bit was on the condemnation provisions. We're not aware of any proposal to condemn property, but if the buyer has the option, if a condemnation should come along during the due diligence period, they can terminate the agreement, or they can keep the agreement and pay full price, but then take the condemnation proceeds. Again, because the, I pointed this out to their attorney, because the county just went through and upgraded the roadways, and the city just went through and upgraded West Freeway Drive, there's really little reason to believe that condemnation action is going to come forward in the next four or five months. So while we went back and forth on that provision, it's probably not of much consequence. Then the closing, on page 11, there's a reference to the closing. Seller and buyer must perform their obligations under this section, which is the closing section, on the date that is 10 days, business days after the expiration of the feasibility period. So while there's a 120-day period for feasibility, that's pretty typical, there's a very short timeframe to close. And, and we do believe that the buyer is motivated to get on with this transaction and, and be able to market the property. The only thing that would extend that, and it's pretty typical in the real estate community, buyers and sellers of property looking for the opportunity to do a 1031 tax exchange, and that's to help the, the seller of property not incur taxes, and so this property may be used in, in that fashion. If they need an additional 60 days because of a 1031 exchange, they have to give us another $10,000 to make that happen. So the rest is pretty standard type of provisions that we've seen in other purchase agreements. We did have a little bit of back and forth, but I think we got to a decent agreement, and we're ready to recommend approval. The motion includes a reference to a preparation of not only authorizing the transaction, but preparing a resolution, because that has to be done before the property is sold. So we'll come back after the due diligence period is run. When we're getting ready for closing, we'll have a resolution for the council to approve, but that's pretty standard format. Are there questions that I can address?
So I did read the whole thing this morning because I had a little time. I had, I didn't, I had never seen a condemnation clause, and maybe I just haven't read enough of these, but you had a good explanation of it, so thank you. My only other question, is that really the spelling of her name, Patricia? Because it's not a correct spelling of Patricia. But she's, I'm sure she's looking at it, and she should have corrected it, but.
Yeah, it looks like Patrica. Well, that was provided by buyer's counsel, so that, they did the first draft of this agreement, so.
I would, just in case she didn't see it, you might want to just check, because that would be a error.
That's interesting. Yeah, it's, it's carried through to the last, to the signature page.
Yep.
So maybe it is Patrica.
Yeah.
Interesting. Well, you obviously did read it.
Yes, I did. But that was all I had, thank you.
P-A-T?
No, we think it should be what it is, if they, if they're the ones that drafted.
How do the people spell it?
It should be.
CIA.
CIA, yeah, on the end.
Patricia.
If it's Patricia.
Well, call the council. Any other questions or discussion?
I just say congratulations. I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're getting this one done.
And Jack did most of the work until it got to the last couple of rounds with the attorneys, so.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, oh, I do have one other question. Go ahead.
No, I just, that's it.
When you do a plat, it's not what's going to go on, it's just a plat of the actual vacant property, right? I mean, he doesn't, he's not plating out what he's going to put there.
No, no, it's, it's a plat, and the, the draft preliminary plat has already been prepared. It's something we've been working on, and it actually involves city properties, one which is north of there, which is 27 acres, there's about six outlots on it. So the draft that's been done, Eleanor and I talked about that today, and we'll be getting up with Widseth to get them going to get this processed, and you should see that plat before us, probably within the next 30 days.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And if you're wondering, it's, it's one of the exhibits, it's exhibit B of the agreement. That's the plat that the city's been working on for some time.
Correct.
Yep.
That's the duck head, right?
Yeah, or the loon head, whatever. Yes, definitely is.
So I'll make a motion to approve the proposed purchase agreement with Stephen R. Saunders and Patricia M. Saunders, and authorize staff and the city attorney to prepare a resolution authorizing closing on this property. Is there a second?
This is Ron, I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Yay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel, and thank you for the early exit on this summer night, sort of summer night.
Yeah, they're winding down. Enjoy it.
Will do.
All right.
And good luck on Fall Fest. I don't think I'll see you before that.
Oh, thank you.
It's almost here.
Yep.
I hope it's a day like today.
I looked, I looked ahead, and so far, so good on the forecast, so, yeah. So far, so good. It's a long way out, but maybe we'll be lucky.
Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so now we'll go back to number three, 2025 capital improvement plan, pages seven and eight in our enclosure.
Well, unfortunately, our plans that were kind of listed in the packet summary for these items didn't exactly work out the way we hoped. I had to be off Monday, and Cheryl was off today. So the first thing I prepared was the handout that I passed out earlier, and it's to show you how we can get to a zero levy budget, and then the decision will be made on if we want to adjust anything on achieving that goal. But on the first page, it says projected 2025 city levy expenses. We're starting out with our current expenses for, projected for 2025, at $4,853,980. Now, if we take the 2025 non-levy revenues, which are on the second page of this attachment, which show those things that aren't subject to the levy, and subtract that from that amount, we get $4,325,980. What we're trying to do is get down to the amount that we actually have to levy for. Jim and I worked together today on several different scenarios, on some budget cuts, and we came up with $93,000 in reductions. And if you subtract that, then from that $4,325,980, we come up with a number of $4,232,980, which would be the levy expenses that we would be looking for for 2025. Last year's levy number was $4,232,386. There's a difference of $594 that we're over now, which would reflect, if we just use that, that would be one-tenth of a percent increase in the budget. So we, we want to go ahead and at least get that down to zero. We didn't do it for this. We, it'll be easy to find a place where we can get that reduction. As far as going forward with this, this is the number we would need to use. We would have to add the EDA levy, which before the EDA meeting tonight was $76,638. It had been proposed for $91,638, and it's now been reduced to $81,638. We'll have to go back in there and add that extra $5,000 and find a way to address that in our goal to get this down to a zero levy increase. The HRA levy is proposed to remain flat at $120,000, and the Sunrise River SRWMO levy is projected to go up $240. So we're going to have to go back and come up with approximately $5,800 in further reductions to get that down to the zero levy overall. On our preliminary tax levy, the general fund, and general does, 7L at the end of it, would be $4,136,752. That was what we would need to levy for, in addition to the EDA, that would go up, the Sunrise River. And based on those, the total tax capacity-based levies would be $4,232,980 in addition to the HRA levy. At the bottom, there's some footnotes there that indicate that enterprise funds, Sunrise River WMO, HRA, or EDA levies are outside the general levy. The EDA levy is listed on its own, the HRA levy is listed on its own, Sunrise River is listed independently, and the enterprise funds are off budget. In getting to these cuts, what we did, we found a way to reduce the Public Works Blacktop Fund by $35,000, Fund 406, which is the fire department fund, by $20,000, and Fund 407, which is our cap, city capital general fund, by $30,000, animal control by $2,000, and our law enforcement contract by $6,000. And that's the sum where we gave, got, got those cuts, and we'll be able to, we'll go back and figure out where to get the rest of them. And we're also looking direction, too, if you have any recommendations on what you'd like to see, but this would get us to a 0% levy increase. I do want Cheryl to go over these numbers to make sure we're accurate. I did have a few communications with her today, but I didn't want to bother her too much, so we'll verify those on Friday, but this is what we would propose as far as the number goes for the levy for 2025.
Nice job. I do have a question, though, on when, on your note on the bottom, the things that you reduced more, like the Blacktop Fund and the law enforcement. I mean, that's not going to jeopardize any of our services that.
No, and, you know, as far as the Blacktop Fund goes, we had the first scenario where we had some more deeper reductions, but we found a way to kind of smooth those out a little bit better, and that won't have any effect. And then there's also the other way we could use to address these reductions, and that would be the use of our general fund excess account. Personally, I would like not to use that, because then when you do that, you essentially start out in a hole. Next year, there's a revenue gap. But that's another way we could address this. So we've got many ways to do it to get down to zero, and I think we're in pretty good shape.
Jack, how did you get the $6,000 off the law enforcement?
What we did, they had the base cost that they gave us, plus what they anticipated in state aid, which is another $16,000. So when I did it, and we presumed it last time, I just split the difference in that in case they didn't do it. Typically, they've always gotten that state aid, so now I just left a $2,000 cushion in there. But I don't think there's any real risk with that.
Thank you.
And then on the animal control, how did you do the two? Is that just making the assumption that we're going to be able to recoup some of those impound fees?
It's an assumption, and I also had a conversation with Renee, with.
Britt?
Well, Renee is the one we get the addresses from, so we've already gotten the first round of addresses from her on the last bill that we had, so we'll follow up on those that we can to get that collection, and that's just an estimate, so I think we can probably get there.
But, but that's how you did it, is assuming that we would be collecting the impound fees?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll, we'll collect those that pick their dogs up, and we'll send them a bill and see what we can do to make that whole.
Do we need to do some, an ordinance adjustment or something to reflect that new process?
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have that in an ordinance form.
Any other questions?
Well, I just had a question about the, the handout that you gave us just now. Is that the same, or is it with the changes that you made, that you noted here, is what is reflected in?
No, those, we, we just finished this up late today. Those have not been adjusted to reflect this.
Okay.
And what that will do on some of these, these schedules on the transfers, that's where it's going to affect it, on the Public Works Fund, the, well, not the Public Works Fund, it'll be for a year, but on the capital fund, the city capital fund, and the fire capital fund, we'll probably be reducing or looking at reducing some of those transfers. We did do that in a rough schedule, and we do still have the cash flow. And we can, we can tidy this up and get any information you want. We'll have that ready for presentation at the next meeting with everything listed out.
Okay, because we, what's, remind me what our deadline is for the proposed...
We have to have this...
Or preliminary?
September the 30th.
September, okay. So we got a couple weeks.
Another just quick question on the Sunrise levy, the 240 increases, that reflecting an increase in the budget that was being proposed by them?
No, that's the, that includes, that was the extra 240 was what we added to for compensation for the board member.
Oh, okay. Oh, for, for Tim?
Yes.
So the other, so then, I think, I don't remember exactly what the dollar amount was, but I believe that we came up with this figure, taking the allocation that we were assigned in the JPA, and then adding staff time. So if that hasn't been adjusted for proposed salary increases and costs of benefits, you might want to up that a little bit more, because it's, that's how you get to that $19,000. I think the total that we pay as part of the JPA is just a little bit south of $10,000, and the rest of it is, is staff time.
And what we had, well, the number that I had here was $19,350 before that 240 was added. We'll go back and check that, though.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm just, I don't know, I don't know, I think it was mostly like Elizabeth and planners' time, I mean, because we have to do all the permitting in that area, so we were, we were putting in costs of staff time, and I just think you probably just need to adjust it to reflect cost of living and increases in benefits.
We can certainly do that. And, you know, with this and what we've come up with, you know, if there's a couple hundred dollars changes anyway in anything, we've still got the flexibility to make those adjustments and still keep this levy increase at zero.
Well, it's a separate, it's a separate levy, so it doesn't affect our general levy, but...
Any other questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the mayor and city council members' report. Ron?
I have nothing.
Sue?
I have nothing.
Janet?
I have just a reminder that Fall Fest is coming up, and if you haven't already told me that you want to volunteer for something, please tell me that. We will be meeting as a last volunteer committee meeting on September 17th, where we will be stuffing swag bags and going over volunteer assignments and all those sorts of things, so if you're able to join us, that would be great. And then I've noticed that some of our ACET members are on the line, so you might, I was just going to suggest that perhaps Jack could, could share what the plan is for that resolution. Probably I'm thinking that we were going to pass it tonight.
Janet's talking about the Anoka County Election Integrity Team that came to the council meeting last week and presented their proposal. That resolution will be scheduled for our council meeting on September the 25th. We'll have that for the presentation and adoption at that time.
Thank you.
Rob, anything?
Norrie, part mayor.
And I have nothing. Planning Commission report, Janet?
No, Personnel Committee report? Personnel Committee report?
Yep.
I'll do this quick. So we're in the midst of recruiting for the Assistant City Administrator. I've been helping Lori with that. There are a lot of applications that are coming through, and it will close next Friday, so I think we'll have, hopefully, we'll have enough in a pool to consider moving forward with. I'm, I have not gotten through all of the stuff that has hit our recruitment emails, so I can't tell you for sure, but it's a lot, so that's good news. And then I'll just move on quick on the Planning Commission report. It was a joint meeting on September 4th, so you were all there, so I have no report.
Thank you, Janet. Public Works Report, MTW Truck Wash.
Mr. Mayor and Council, after the Planning Commission meeting, I'm going to say last week, because I wasn't there, there was some discussion about water supply. Between myself and Bill Carth, we kind of came up with a little scenario on, or description of what our water supply is. If you guys want to briefly look at that, I can answer any questions, but I personally have no concerns about the volume of water that they're going to use affecting the water system. Any constant demand that happens on our system is easily maintained by the amount of pumps and capacity that we have at this point, if that makes sense.
What was the problem that you were talking to us about before? Was that not a non-constant demand problem?
So if you look at, so like, we'll use the truck wash demand, right? They're going to, they're going to start running water, and they're going to run that for some period of time. Those demands allow our system to start up and equalize that demand, and then maintain it. If you have somebody that comes in, and we're just going to use fire hydrants, per se, open up a fire hydrant, I crank it open, and I run it for a minute, two minutes maybe, and then I shut it back off. Our system sees that as a high-capacity loss, and it starts to ramp up, and, you know, you might have one or two or three pumps that are trying to satisfy that demand, and then they shut it off. So now that, basically, that rush of water that's coming to wherever that loss is at just hits a brick wall and says, oh, hey, we're, there's no more demand here, and now you got to shut everything back off. That creates that water hammer, and it's just the quick on-off that gives us a lot of troubles.
Okay.
The steady supply, so you, if somebody opened up that fire hydrant and just let it run for an hour, not a problem, because our system is going to start up, it's going to figure out what that demand is, whether it's 500 gallons a minute or, you know, 1,500 gallons a minute, and it just, you know, it will pump that water, and it will fluctuate up and down depending on what that demand load is. So the longer it runs, the better it is for the system, the shorter it runs, the harder it is on the system.
Thanks for that explanation.
Okay, so it's actually a good, good thing, a help to the system.
A steady, a steady demand on any water system is nice. The quick on-and-offs are hard on any water system. Even if you have a water tower, you know, that water starts to rush towards that loss, and then when that gets shut off, you know, depending on how aggressively somebody shuts something off, or how quick that demand goes away, that can create water hammer in the system, so that water will be flowing towards that at a high rate of speed, we're going to say, and then it stops. So that water hits that wall then, and then starts to bounce back. It's kind of like a, if you threw a superball at the wall, you know what I mean? You're, you're going at a rate of speed, and then you hit that stopping point, and then it comes back, and then it hits the stop point on this side, and then it just kind of moves around till it equalizes.
Okay.
So the bottom line is, the truck wash facility shouldn't be a problem.
Water-wise?
Yeah, yeah.
I have, I have a question. So the question of whether they recirculate or recycle the water versus not, is that a Met Council mandate, or?
That's going to be more entirely up to them.
Up to them, as in the applicant, or? I thought, I thought that they had to meet a certain, the Met Council might require them to recycle because of the output to the sewer, but maybe I misunderstood that.
And I don't know what their flow restrictions may be. The thing that I've seen happen most is if the discharge has some things in the effluent that are hard to treat, sometimes they have to do a pre-treatment before they discharge. But I think in this case, it probably wouldn't be that much overall in what they're going to be adding to the flow. I mean, when, if you looked, you know, they, they talked about running 24 hours a day, and they gave the number, and then they, their more realistic number is probably the 12 hours per day, and they may not be, that may not be continuous, and that would be something like 8,000 gallons a day, which is, in the big picture, is very miniscule to what they're receiving, even when it gets to Forest Lake.
So hours of operation always are something that we kind of look at pretty carefully, and so if they start off doing, I'm making it up, 12 hours, are you planning to have a condition that if they go to 24, 24/7, they have to come back for approval, or how, how do you handle that?
I think that could be a condition of the CUP, and I think it's something that would be well-considered.
I'd like to see how it's going before we went on 24/7 schedule, so if we could have that as a condition, I would, I would advocate for that.
And, you know, I'm, they, they may have a better handle on this than I think, but I'm not sure they know exactly what to think now, in terms of what their usage is going to be, or what their demand's going to be. But to me, if it's 12 hours a day and somewhat continuous, that's, that's a lot of vehicles going through there. It would be close to 50 a day, so, and I'm sure there'll be some probably, but I'm sure it's not going to be a whole lot at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, I wouldn't think, but we'll find out.
Well, didn't they say it was like every 15 minutes? So if they have two bays, it would be more like 96...
Yeah.
Vehicles, if they were constant going through.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know, on the one bay, is the manual bay, you know, it may be longer, they actually may use more water on that side, too, I don't know.
Well, I know he said that the timing was about the same, which I thought was, takes me a lot longer to do it manually than going through the car wash, but...
Any other questions, anyone?
Is this going, is this going to be sent to the Planning Commission? I know that they've...
This, this will be presented to the Planning Commission at their meeting next week.
Okay, great, thanks.
City Administrator's report, Jack?
Our contract with Career Enhancement Options, Inc., that's Ellen Hendricks, who served us in, working in some of her HR issues, her contract expired December the 31st, or August the 31st. There's still a balance in that contract, and from discussions at the Personnel Committee, we'd like to recommend that her contract be extended through December 31st of this year, and not exceed the balance that's in there of $12,109. And if we could, that's, I'm requesting that be a motion, and requesting approval of that.
Anyone?
I can make the motion, so I move to approve the contract extension for Career Enhancement Options Incorporated to December 31st, 2024, with or not to exceed the current contract balance of $12,109.
Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Anything else, Jack?
No, that's it.
On to letter E, announcements and reminders. Sunrise River, September 12th at 6:30 PM, East Bethel City Hall. Planning Commission meeting next Wednesday, the 18th, at 6 here. City Council meeting September 25th, 2024, and between those two will be Fall Fest. Right?
Fall Fest on the 20th to the 22nd.
Got it. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion before we leave? Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned at 6:44.